The passage of time. We have shared your joy at the birth of your children and proudly we have watched them grow. We've taken care of your health care needs during the good times and the not so good. Your parents and grandparents have depended upon us. Together, we have shared the struggles and the wonders of life. At Oconomia County Hospital, we are celebrating 30 years of being your lifelong choice in health care.
This meeting of the Starkville Board of Aldermen will now come to order. Please rise for the singing of the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a brief moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, you have before you a copy of the modified written agenda. Are there any proposed revisions to the agenda? Are there any proposed revisions to the agenda?
Alderman Vaughn?
Just gonna take me a second. Go ahead.
Okay. Alderman Vaughn?
I would like to move to the consent on the J public service. Item number six, request of President's style 1900 left, grab the sewer line to serve the three residents on Sitters Road in 1998 and next area at an estimate cost of $43,323. I'd like to move that to the consent.
Proposed revision from Alderman Vaughn is to move item J six on page five, request for approval of installation of 1900 feet of sewer line in the 1998 annex area to the consent agenda. Is there any objection?
I'd like to discuss it a little further before.
Okay. All right, that one will remain off the consent agenda. Okay. Any further proposed revision?
Under board business, 10, G and H, under board business, put under consent.
Proposed revision from Alderman Dumas is on page three, items 10, G and H, board business. Item 10G is the consideration of closing North Long Street for an event at J L King Park from 11 to 3 on Saturday, August 7th. Item H is consideration of authorizing the payment of $10,805 to Golden Triangle Regional Airport as approved by the Board of Aldermen on February 19, 2008, as a revenue guarantee. Alderman Dumas' proposed revision is to place both of those items on the consent agenda. Is there any objection? Any objection? Any objection to placing those items on the consent agenda? All right, seeing none, please note the change in your package. Further proposed revisions to the agenda? Are there any further proposed revisions to the agenda? Any further revisions? Any further revisions? Any further revisions? Seeing none, a motion to approve the agenda as revised would be in order.
I move.
Alderman Corrigan made a motion to approve the revised written agenda. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion been seconded by Alderman Vaughn. Alders in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Alders opposed, please signify by saying nay. Measure clearly passes. And you have before you the revised consent agenda. Is there any objection to the revised consent agenda? Any objection? Any objection? Any objection? Seeing none, the consent agenda has been approved. First matter of business you have before you is the consideration of the minutes from July 6, 2010. Discussion?
I move.
Alderman Vaughn has made a motion to approve the minutes of the City of Starkville Board of Aldermen regular meeting of July 6, 2010. Alderman Vaughn has entered motion.
There's my motion.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion been seconded by Alderman Perkins. Alderman Vaughn, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No.
Any discussion?
And these are the minutes as amended, correct? That Marquita has?
With the new, well, I put this in front of them, so this is the one with the minutes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, and so is everybody clear on what that includes in the minutes? You have a supplement to your minutes that was included at the desk.
And what I did was just the first page, changed the first page out.
Included in the package we got today?
Yeah.
It's on the table.
Just to be clear, the two changes that were made, a date of June 1 showed, and Marquita just changed that to July 6th, and my name was listed as the city attorney being present, and I was out that day, and Ronnie Roberts was filling in for me, so he's listed on there as filling in for me. So we were just making those two clarifications.
So the motion as it stands, and Alderman Vaughn, just clarify this with you, is to approve the minutes as presented with the first page that was placed on your desk as serving as the first page rather than the original first page. All right. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, Alders in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Alders opposed, please signify by saying nay. Measure clearly passes. The next matter on the agenda is comments by the mayor and the board. And I have a couple of comments versus, I believe this is the last time I will be making this announcement, and that is that our final power outage for substation work will be scheduled for this Saturday, August 7th. It will proceed in the exact same manner as our previous three power outages for this work have proceeded. Between the hours of 3:00 and 5:00 a.m., residents in South Starkville, particularly southeast Starkville, will notice a power outage if anybody is up to notice it between 3:00 and 5:00 a.m. Residents in North Starkville will notice only minor disturbance, if any disturbance at all. And this should conclude our series of power outages. And finally, I would just like to commend everybody that took part in the Disability Awareness Day events that took place on July 24 at the community market. There were several Aldermen participated, several department heads and city personnel that participated. I found this to be a wonderful exercise. It was quite eye-opening, as those of us that participated actually simulated having physical disabilities, the disabilities that were simulated were being in a wheelchair and seeing the wheelchair accessibility of various areas of downtown Starkville, and also various visual impairments, walking in the downtown area, and also going through buildings, notably City Hall. And it was a wonderful experience, and I commend the Commission on Disability for putting the event together. I think it served us quite well. And that's all of my comments. First comment we have from the members of the board is the recognition of the Employee of the Month from Alderman Corey.
I have the honor of announcing the city's employee of the month for July 2010, who's Mr. Willie Turner. Is he in? Okay. Our employee of the month for July 2010 is Mr. Turner. Mr. Turner began working for the City of Starkville Sanitation Department as a laborer in September of 1986. He worked for two years as a laborer and a backup driver before serving the past 22 years as a full-time driver. Mr. Turner is a proven leader and takes his job and responsibilities very seriously. He's always one of the first drivers to show up, get in his truck, and start helping whenever there's a catastrophe or a special event that requires the attention of the sanitation department. Whatever needs to be done, regardless of the task, day or night, Mr. Turner is ready and willing to help. He's so well-liked and respected by his peers, they decided to choose him as the sanitation department employee of the month. City of Starkville and sanitation department are both proud to recognize Mr. Willie Turner as employee of the month of July 2010.
I'd like to say that he's Mr. Turner's brother.
Are there any further comments from the members of the board? Any further comments from the members of the board? Any further comments? Seeing none, we will move to citizen comments. Any citizen wishing to be recognized for comments may do so by coming forward, introducing yourself, and you will be recognized to speak for a maximum of three minutes.
Good into more, good into board. My name is Alvin Tunnelwater, 7. Good evening to Vice Mayor Sis Trump and Alderman Vaughn.
Okay, Alvin, good evening.
That's my baby brother. He looks out for his big brother. Citizens have a few concerns. Citizens have gotten to the boiling point. Citizens have looked at the Mayor Dan Kemp administration versus disadministration. Citizens have seen that we had some issues that were taken care of quickly. Danger dog on the, the, uh, no smoking order. The, uh, pace of streets are, we have downtown clock. We have the leg department. We did not allow alcohol on Sunday, and it formed a sidewalk committee. At this administration, we have had alcohol on Sunday.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Further citizen comments? Any further citizen comments?
Good evening to you all. My name is Jane Veemer. I'm a citizen of Starkville, and I live in Greenbrier. And I'm here regarding the ordinance currently being considered to limit the cutting of trees that have reached a certain size within Starkville city limits. This ordinance would constitute government infringement upon the ownership rights of Starkville residents who have trees on their property. This ordinance would deprive landowners of what it means to be an owner. This ordinance would deprive powers of ownership. This ordinance would demote landowner to the position of groundkeepers for the city of Starkville. And this ordinance would constitute a charge, an annual municipal taxes, for the privilege of being groundkeepers for the city of Starkville. Basically, what I'm saying is, this is my property. I own this property. I should be allowed to cut a tree if I so wish, without anyone telling me I can or I cannot. If this passes, this will just be another freedom that has been taken from the citizens of this community. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, let me get recognition. What is your name?
Jane Veemer.
Say your last name.
V-E-M-E-R.
And where do you live again?
In Green, in.
Greenbrier. Yes, ma'am, thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Further citizen comments?
My name is Betty Bell, and I live at 973 Sitters Road, where I request for the waste sewer to be ran out to where we were elected out to for the city limit, because I wanted to try to get a place for my daughter and grandchildren to help somewhere to live on that land, so it would be very important to us, you know, to our citizens. And letting the sewer be run out down 389. Sitters Road, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Further citizen comments?
I'm Mike Allen, Ward 5, and I'd like to say for the record, I like trees, and I wish I had more of them, but I value freedom, and I'm coming again like I did with the helmet ordinance. This is a liberty issue. I'm not, like the lady said, I'm not a gardener or caretaker for the city of Starkville. I'm a property owner. I pay taxes on my property, and those are my trees, and I own those trees, not the city of Starkville. There's not a collective right, it's my right. And in a free society, government cannot take those rights away from us, so I just feel very strongly about this, and I don't feel like this board has the power or authority to do such a thing in a free society. I'm also concerned about the tree board that is referenced in the ordinance, and if you look at the makeup, according to the article in the Starkville Daily News, it's a stacked board as well. It's got an arborist, a geographic information system specialist, a master gardener, a landscape architect, an urban forester, a plant ecologist, a horticulturist, and a wildlife ecologist. There's no homeowners on there, you know, specifically, no developers, nobody that would want to use trees, other than, you know, from a beauty or ownership perspective. Also, the ordinance reads in the fifth whereas that it references indiscriminate cutting, and uses the word desirable and mature trees so they can be regulated to enhance the health and welfare of the residents of the city of Starkville. Who defines indiscriminate? And who defines desirable? The owner should define those terms, not somebody else who doesn't own the trees. One other issue, and this is from this year in the New York Times, in the Central Park Zoo, there was a baby killed by a tree branch that fell. There's also several others were mentioned this year where trees branches damaged or killed someone in another case this year in New York. If the city is regulating the trees, does that mean the city is now responsible for any damage that happens on any trees? I don't think the city needs to step into that liability. As a landowner, I'm responsible for cutting the damaged trees, not the city going out doing that. Even in a well-managed zoo, accidents happen, and those are managed trees, so I think it's the property owner that should be doing that. So I'm coming here on an issue. I like trees. I don't want to just cut them down, but liberty, again, I don't want my liberties taken away. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen.
Thank you.
Further citizen comments?
I'm Judd Ward, Ward 5, and I'm in opposition to any ordinance that restricts the right of the property owner to decide what vegetation or trees, bushes, gardens are on their property. It's, when we were saying the Pledge of Allegiance, and the last part says in liberty and justice for all, that's a basic liberty and right, the right to own property. That's what our founding fathers pledged their lives and their fortunes for. And I think it's wrong, it's wrong to try to micromanage each piece of property according to the wishes of a board or anyone else. It's the individual property owner that has the right to decide, as long as that property is not a danger to someone else, then he has the right to do that. And I'm opposed to the government getting into that. And if that happens, if there's an ordinance passers that is restrictive in any way, then what will the next step be? Will we be restricted? Will we have to wear uniforms too? I mean, I know that sounds outlandish, but, I mean, where do we draw the line? It's individual property's owner's right to manage his own property. That's only fair and right. That's American.
Thank you. Further citizen comments?
My name is Dylan Cargis. Resident on Ward 5. I wanted to speak to an issue on the docket four that has been placed on the consent agenda, and that was the approval for the signing of the contract for the Mississippi Arts Commission grant. I wrote the narrative and the project description for that grant on behalf of the city for the beautification committee, and that's been a focus for the beautification committee to really sort of step up as the committee, as the city committed $15,000 to matching funds for sort of a capital campaign to do improvements downtown and to take on sort of an arts-based approach to community development. And that's what we approached the Mississippi Arts Commission grant through, is an arts-based community development. I just wanted to thank the city and the mayor and the board for the support for not only writing that grant, but for the impetus to really pursue that type of development in the city. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I've got a question, Mr. Cargis. Do you know where the mural is going to be?
We're working on that. We have a couple locations on our radar, and I've dropped by a couple locations as well. So we have commitments for projects downtown, and it's just working out the details of that, the specific location for that project.
Any specific theme you're going to go after?
It's, the project is spelled out pretty specifically in the grant application, but it's multi-layered, where we're going to facilitate arts workshops in the schools with elementary students and use their drawings to build a composition that's just community-themed, and so it'll sort of be reactionary to what's produced in the workshops, but it'll be built off the children's drawings, but professionally managed.
And I want to thank Dylan for all this hard work. This is one of a few awarded grants. He's really been a great leader for that, not only beautification efforts with this effort, but with the community market and several other things, so I appreciate it,
Further citizen comments?
My name is John Moller. I'm attorney for Walt Star and the Federal Land Bank. The matter I'm here to speak about is listed as board business item 10. I would prefer to speak to the issues when the board takes that matter up as board business, if that's permissible. If not, I'll use my kind of mail.
Yes, I think I'm going to steer it that way, because I think that's a matter that might be appropriate for executive session. However, one caveat I guess I want to offer is, in the event that it goes into executive session, you would not be invited to speak unless the board invited you into the room.
Well, I'm going to go ahead and make some comments, and then if you choose to hear from me again, I'll take that up. I'll speak again. But basically, I'm here to get permanent COs for the Walt Star property, which includes Walt Star and Dr. Martin, our new royal surgeon, as well as the Federal Land Bank. I know this has been an ongoing project, and it's been on the agenda multiple times, but we're in a situation, we're basically on the one-yard line trying to push this thing on across. The last time we met with the board, there were several conditions issued on those temporary COs. All of those items have been met, with the exception that the developer has not signed the plat. Dr. Star, who owns both buildings on his property, has executed the plat. Federal Land Bank has executed the plat. Both projects have, are given building permits by the city. Both projects were built according to plans and specifications. Both projects had architects. All the inspections were done by the city. The stormwater ordinance was complied with. The last item was an electrical loop easement that was necessary because it's commercial development, and they like to have a backup electrical source, especially considering this involves doctors' offices. So that was finally procured. The last and only thing that has not been procured is execution of the plat by the developer. I know the city attorney, Mr. Latimer, has been in discussions with the developer's attorney regarding some potential modifications of that language. As I said, Dr. Star and the land bank have already executed the plat, which included the indemnity language, which we didn't have any objection to. So basically, what I'm asking for is allow us to have our permanent COs, because there's nothing left that we can add to this situation. Everything that's been required of us, we've done. There's nothing left that we can actually do that's going to add to this situation. I've discussed this matter with Mr. Griffith. I've discussed it with Edward Kemp, who deferred me to Ben, and Ben indicated to me that if the board didn't have any objections to it, he didn't, I hope I'm reciting that correctly. But like I said, we'd like to get our permanent COs. The last thing we need is for those doctors' clients to be calling patients canceling appointments because, you know, electricity is going to be turned off. If the board's got any questions for me, I'll take them now. If you want to ask me questions when you take it up as board business, I'll be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Mr. Mayor, just one question. Mr. Moore, this is something you need an urgent response to from the city.
Yes, actually, tomorrow is the day that the city will actually send a 10-day notice that the electricity will be cut off in 10 days. So we need to get this resolved.
And I'm hoping that the city can give you an immediate response to this, and hopefully, maybe if not tonight, in the morning, so you'll give them the which direction to move in.
And I would like to say this, I think Ben could verify that we've worked diligently trying to bring all these issues to the forefront, and it's not been any delay on my client's parts in any way. In fact, I think we've worked on it so much, they're tired of seeing us come around.
One last thing, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Moore, we certainly appreciate your clients being here. That's been good for our economy. It promotes good business and healthy economy, so we appreciate what y'all have done.
Thank you, Mr. Burke.
Mr. Mayor, one clarification. Mr. Moore, the city of Starkville has also now signed the plat, has it not?
That's correct. The only execution left is by the developer, and like I say, I think there's, y'all had some discussions about the indemnity language on that plat.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Further citizen comments? Any further citizen comments?
My name's Billy Kelly. I'm actually the, I'm with Environmental Consultants Incorporated. I'm acting systems office for 4 County Electric. I'm here about the tree ordinance. It was brought to me by interim CEO, Mr. Para. The question, there's nothing in here specific about utilities, about the power utilities and removing trees. We currently have trees throughout the city that we have already signed up with property owners to, you know, give them their permission or gotten their permission to take the trees down that are interfering with the power lines. They're not all dead. Some are the ones that they would rather have taken down instead of trimmed properly for the power lines, which is aesthetically unpleasing, I'll admit. But I guess the question is, I don't know if I'm approaching this correctly or not, I'm sorry, but there's nothing specific up in here about with the utilities and being able to take the trees down during the six months. So I've never been to one of them. I know what you do, Alderman Dumas is the liaison, and I guess the question is, where do utilities stand on being able to take the trees down that are within the easements?
When you talk about, when you talk about electrical easements, these are contracts that you sign with the homeowner?
Yes.
To clear these?
Are there prescribed easements of established lines? We have some in the lower part of the city, and we have some lines that should come through down Jackson out 182. So I mean, and so I was curious, and nothing was specific about the utilities having the right to kill them.
Let me get to the, let me get to the actual. It's my opinion, now this has not been discussed by the, by the tree board, but that would constitute, let's see, there was a line in here. Yeah, well, the variance itself is for trees that are not within the standard by which the moratorium was written, sixteen-inch DBH and healthy trees. I think the justification would be made that if those are posing impacts to utility easements, that those would have the issue of being needed to be trimmed or pruned or removed. That's something we did not discuss in this moratorium. So, obviously, it's not in there, but what's, how many, rough estimate, I mean, how many trees are we talking about here? How many?
We have a lot.
This really wasn't the nature of what this moratorium was written around.
Exactly. And Dr. Gray, oh, he and I, up at the Urban Forestry Council Office, we're discussing this. They're just, right now, we're not scheduled for a lot of schedule maintenance in this, within the city right now, which was a positive thing. We have just some scattered spots. One is in the neighborhood off of 182, just past 25. There's two oak trees that I know of there. They're scattered here and there. There's a few customer requests. It's not a major clearing or any of that nature. We're just wondering with, you know, requests that have already been signed up prior to this, or can we still, we're already having a range of homeowners, property owners to go ahead and take these trees down, and they are, with the trees that are directly in conflict with power.
Right.
Nothing that I know of at this point, and like I said, I oversee all the vegetation management of any new clearing.
Right. And it's my opinion that with those having impacts to utilities, those themselves would be deemed, you know, as necessary of removal, so.
And I just, one more comment. A lot of people commented on this, and I, myself, I'm a certified arborist, you know, specialist for the United States of Cultural. I've been in the utility side since I got out of the United States Navy. An ordinance is good for cities, just to keep people from malice in cutting trees. Mobile, Alabama, if they hadn't gotten a strict ordinance on live oaks, they would probably have been wiped out by now. So, the only other suggestion I could have is that on your tree advisory board, as someone from your utility as a representative for, because in a lot of cases, just listening to people, Dr. Gray has even made the comment, they're not always sure what, how, and why, what we do as utility line clearance. So, just as a suggestion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Further citizen comment?
Just a second argument. What's the consequences if I cut a tree on my property? I don't have a tree I want to cut, by the way. What happens if I want to cut a tree? What are the consequences on the basis?
You have to replace that tree with an equivalent tree that will be deemed by the tree board.
So, if I cut a fifty-year-old tree, I got to replace the fifty-year-old tree?
I don't think that's necessarily the case. No, I think that would be deemed by the tree board, is what I said.
And let's try to limit the comment period to more comment and less dialogue. Further citizen comment?
Kerry Hunt, Ward One. I would speak on the plan they call Starkville, the most progressive city in Mississippi. One, I don't think that all people deem the term progressive to be a positive, to be in a positive light. It kind of, I mean, personally, I take it to be more Big Brother-looking-over shoulder every turn, every time we turn around, so, you know, I don't take it in a positive light myself. I'm sure those of you who want that do take it in a positive light, but not all citizens do.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Further citizen comment? Any further citizen comment? Any further citizen comment? Seeing none, we'll move to public appearances. Our first public appearance this evening is by Nia Smith from Smithwell, Inc., requesting assistance for funding on their program in law. And you'll have a maximum of ten minutes to make your presentation.
Yes, sir. The two of us both work for the Starkville School District, and we have opened up a company, we opened it last year, to tutor children from third grade all the way through college. And upon embarking upon that, we have been working with children within the city of Starkville, as well as some surrounding counties, whose parents have been wanting to bring their children and get their children some extra help. You have to excuse me, I'm a little nervous. We have been working with adult education as well, getting adults ready for ACTs and GED. We have also been working with some adults on the ASFAB, as well as with the practice She, Ms. Yolanda Maxwell, is at Starkville High School, and I have been moved to Armstrong Middle School this year. This summer, we had a camp for children, getting them prepared for school next year, and the children we served were from Starkville. We served some from Ackerman, Greenville, and some grandparents threw their children in from out of state to get them the academic help they needed in math, reading, and writing. We had seventy-one children total, and we also have adults that we're serving on Saturdays and in the evenings, working with them. We're located on Russell Street, across from the BP gas station, one of Representative Ellis's buildings. And we are wanting to purchase some software to help with job training. It's Keytrain with Work Keys that will help adults get the online job training that they need and to get them assessed in math and reading, so that they can get the job skills that are needed for employment. We also would like to purchase Renaissance package, the Renaissance package on math and reading that will help children increase their reading level, as well as increase their math skills with additional support from us in school and out of school. The reason why we would like these things is because people today enjoy immediate feedback and immediate response, and kids especially enjoy having computer usage. And these are the things that these two programs would offer. The Job Keys also gives them a chance to go in and practice different skills, and then at the end, it will give them their reading level, as well as their math level, and you can increase that, and we'll be able to help them increase that with the additional material that we have. And it allows them to see what kind of careers that they would be good at, and it would, it also allows them to see different jobs that are here in the state of Mississippi that they can be able to take this information to for employment.
Any questions or comments from the members of the board? I guess, I've got one for you, and that was, in looking over your request, was it a request for funding for five thousand dollars?
Yes.
And of course, a matter like this is always up to the board, but the way it initially struck me is a contribution of that magnitude is usually something that would be considered in the annual budget process, when the board considers outside contributions. Is it something you would like to be considered by the board as an outside contribution for the next budget year, or would you like for them to consider the matter more immediately? I guess, looking for a little guidance on your request.
I believe what we were looking for is something that would be considered, not necessarily immediately, but something that can be worked on, because I think that this is something that is essential, and I believe if we were asking for it immediately, you know, that would be very hard. So, if it were to be considered and discussed for the next budget, because we really want to help improve the education and the work skills that a lot of people here in Starkville are struggling with.
And if you would like to submit it as a request for outside contribution, the best way to do that is to submit a letter to the city clerk's office, making your request for an outside contribution, and they'll compile the list of all requested outside contributions for fiscal year 2011, and the board will take them up during the budgetary process.
Yes, sir.
Questions or comments from the members of the board?
Mr. Mayor, I'll seek recognition, maybe recognize. Basically, I'm going to say the same thing. Mr. Smith, we appreciate your presence. I'll be very brief. I was about to say what the mayor just said. We get a lot of these requests, and hopefully, this will be a matter that the Budget Committee will consider, among other numerous requests that we get, so we'll, and I'm a member of the Budget Committee, and we'll, I'm sure when the vice mayor calls to the meeting, we'll take a look at it, and we'll give it whatever consideration, if any, that we deem best for the city. But thanks again for your efforts, and we, it's a very difficult decision we have to make. We get a lot of requests every year, with a lot of people asking for money, so we only have so much. But don't get discouraged, but, you know, we'll make whatever decision that we deem necessary and proper. Thank you.
Alden McCord.
My comment is sort of to the same effect. It says in here that you serve as seven counties, and this is a pretty large request for one of these outside contributions. But first of all, I'll say, go back, I appreciate what you're doing, and I really do. Have y'all, maybe a headcount, are y'all going to request from the other six counties or municipalities, or y'all plan, I mean, it's all, you serve as seven, but you're requesting the majority because you're located in Starkville? Is that why?
Yes and no. Some of the counties that we serve are served through our, we've talked to the superintendents and the principals, and so those children call our homework hotline. We have a homework hotline that's open until 10 o'clock at night to assist children with their homework. We also have emailing and blogging, where the children can send us their work that they're having difficulty on, and they'll show their work, they'll scan it, and we can look at what they've done, so that when we are talking to them, we can help them understand where they may have added or subtracted wrong or multiplied incorrectly, so that they can get their problems correct.
Further questions or comments from the members of the board?
Did y'all win a grant this morning?
We did, yes, ma'am. We did receive a grant this morning.
But not for this, not for this, not for this business, for Armstrong?
For our, for our schools, yes.
I thought so.
To put some technology into our classroom to help get our kids caught up with the rest of the nation.
It's, the foundation funds several grants that's competitive throughout the school system, and these two ladies were successful in that grant application.
Further questions or comments from the members of the board? Any further questions or comments? Any further questions or comments? Thank you. And our second public appearance this evening is by Bill Broyles, Bill Kibler, and Thomas Sellers, on behalf of Mississippi State University, for approval of their annual budget from the Supercentury. Y'all will have a maximum of ten minutes.
I hope it won't take anywhere near that long. Good evening. My name is Bill Kibler. I'm the vice president for Student Affairs at Mississippi State. Thomas Sellers, our student body president, and Bill Broyles, assistant vice president for Student Affairs. We present to you, first of all, express our appreciation, because I believe we've had five successful years of utilization of the portion of the 2% tax proceeds that come to Mississippi State for the benefit of students, that has made a world of difference in the ability of our students now. So, Mr. Sellers will be overseeing the sixth year of the application of this money for the benefit, not only of our students and things that they do that they've been able to enhance significantly over the last five years because of this funding, but also things that we believe have brought benefit to the city of Starkville, to our community as well. I believe all of you have this sheet for you, so that's a quick summary of what we're presenting to you this last year in FY10. There was an allocation of $267,000. That was comprised of a projection for revenue of $260,000, and we had a surplus from the previous year of $7,000. So, that, and you see under that column how that money was distributed last year, based on collaboration with our student leadership last year and the allocation of those funds. The actual revenue received, or projected to be received for this year, was about $270,000, but based on work that especially Mr. Broyles has done, working with Lynn Spruill and others, projecting probably a flat revenue for this coming year in order to be fiscally responsible, we believe. So, the box down below, you see the FY11 revenue projection of $270,000. We do have a $12,000 surplus from this last fiscal year, which will be applied to that. So, that's how you get the column on the right that shows the proposed 2011 distribution that you will see, and then Mr. Sellers can certainly comment on the students' input and desire for this. You can see where the focus has been, primarily on Music Maker Productions, which brings concerts, other special events to our campus and community, and Bulldog Bash, which you're all familiar with. So, those are the distributions. We've had significant input, collaboration, preferences from our students, and as we've had over the years, and how this funding is allocated. So, that's what you see for a total budget proposed this coming year of $282,000. Any comments at this point? Would you dare, Thomas? So, that's our presentation. We would be delighted to answer questions if you have about programs, about the determination of proposed budget, or anything about this.
Alden McCord.
Will there be any changes in the night route of the last year? There will not be, no. There were some fuel costs that fluctuate, and so that's where the extra $5,000 will go. The night route also has money that comes from the university and money from the Student Association, so the night route doesn't run on a total of $85,000. It really runs at a cost of over $100,000. That's just the 2% cost. So, there's actually some more costs that we put into it, and the 5%, or the $5,000 will cover some of those costs for fuel and things like that.
Alden McCord.
Explain to me the difference between Music Maker Productions and Bulldog Bash. I mean, can you explain just what those two do?
Well, they're two separate organizations. Music Makers has the, mostly the paid concerts that you hear about. Bulldog Bash is the one event that the SA focuses on that's in the Cotton District. The other events, Music Makers is able to bring, I guess you would say, bigger names because they're a paid concert, but they still bring a lot of people to the city of Starkville. And then also, the Old Main Music Festival is a collaboration of Music Makers and the SA. So, the Music Makers is a different organization from SA, who puts on Bulldog Bash.
But both are student organizations.
Further questions or comments? Alden Sishtrow.
I noticed that the contribution to the Lyceum Series is down quite a bit, and I understand fully how difficult it is to allocate.
It's just been shifted. It's not been reduced.
Okay, that was going to be my question.
Their funding is exactly the same. We were able to identify another source to offload fifteen thousand of that. So, 35,000 will come from this source, 15 from the other. Their funding will be exactly the same.
Okay.
We'd love for it to be more, but at this point, exactly the same is a good thing, right?
Is the 15 rollover from a prior year, or is it ongoing monies?
No, it's ongoing.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Further questions or comments from the members of the board? Any further questions or comments? Any further questions or comments? Thank you. All right, that will exhaust our public appearances for tonight, and we'll now move to a public hearing we have scheduled. And the public hearing is a public hearing requested by Development Enterprises of Starkville for approving a zoning change from R1 Single Family to C2 General Business, located on the western side of Highway 12 East, south of Pat Station Road in Ward Five. Mr. Griffith?
Thank you, Mayor. Item RZ10-04 is a request by Development Enterprises of Starkville, Inc., for approval of a zoning change from R1 Single Family to C2 General Business. The subject property is located on the western side of Mississippi Highway 12 East, approximately one-third of a mile south of Pat Station Road in Ward Five, and will affect approximately 4.88 acres of land. The applicant has stated that he is seeking to rezone the property, which is under contract with a buyer who intends to develop it commercially. The buyer's as-yet unnamed project is estimated to cost $5 to $7 million and create in excess of 20 full-time jobs. A public hearing notice was published in the July 16th edition of the Starkville Daily News, and a placard- News, and a placard was posted on the site concurrent with the notice for tonight's meeting. Six property owners of record within 160 feet of the subject property were notified directly by mail of the request. On July 13th, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to review the rezoning request, and no other, no one other than the applicant addressed the commission. The P&amp;Z commissioners discussed the item for over half an hour with the applicant, and expressed concerns over the development of the Highway 12 corridor from the university to the 182 bypass. The commissioners debated strip commercial development as opposed to mixed-use nodal development. They also discussed the city's comprehensive plan and how it relates to the rezoning of land along the city's highway corridors. After further discussion and a roll call vote, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted four to two to deny the request based on the belief that there was no public need to justify the rezoning request. The applicant is here this evening, as well as several members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. This is a public hearing, so at this time, I need to ask Alderman if any of them have been contacted by anyone regarding the rezoning request.
Would that contact render you guys unable to make a fair and impartial decision based on the evidence before you denied?
No.
Questions or comments for Mr. Griffith?
Mr. Mayor, may I be recognized?
You may.
Mr. Griffith, this particular properties, R1, and they're trying to get to C2, there are no homes at this location, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
And this is, so there are businesses already in this area in question?
Yes, sir, to the immediate north and across the highway to the east.
Okay, and is it, am I correct in understanding that you just testified that there'll be at least 20 full-time projected jobs for this location?
According to the applicant from the proposed buyer.
Okay, and I've looked at your staff report, and you did indicate there that, that there are changes in the condition in the area that would substantiate a zoning change for this?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Further questions or comments by the members of the board? Any further questions or comments from Mr. Griffith? Any further questions or comments? All right, seeing none, we'll move.
Mr. Mayor, one last thing, Mr. Griffith, I was looking for your, your conditions on, in your report, are there any conditions that the board, you know, chooses to adopt this?
No, sir, no, sir, on a rezoning, it's a yes or no answer.
I just wanna make sure, I wanna be sure on it.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any further questions or comments from the members of the board? Seeing none, we'll move to the public hearing portion of the matter, and in keeping with standard practice, the proponent of the zoning change will have a maximum of 15 minutes to speak as to why the zoning change has merit, and you may divide that any way you choose amongst the various parties that you'd like to speak on the matter. Then after that, I will ask for anyone wishing to speak against. Collectively, all of those wishing to speak against the proposed zoning change will have a total of 15 minutes to divide however amongst yourselves you decide you would like to divide that time. Is the proponent ready to speak on the matter of the project?
Yes, ma'am.
And will you be splitting your time with anybody?
No.
Okay.
I'm Andy Gaston with Development Enterprises, I have two handouts I'd like to pass to board members that are permitted. Is that be okay?
You may, yeah.
Thank you. for her, apologies. I'm Andy Gaston with Development Enterprises, historically, the, we purchased this piece of property in 1978, we've been Shelton Jones and I. At the time, we had just thoughts of possible development at some point in the future, we had no firm plan to do anything, so we started developing, started to do agriculture use with timber stand improvement of the property, since we had no plan. In early 2000 or 2001, MDOT came to us with the plan for the Highway 12 extend, extension from the bypass to Highway 182, purchase our property, part of our property approximately 10 acres, well, this happened to split our property right down the middle, and if we had a plan to develop it, we were not able to after that point, when the highway extension was, was provided. Since that time, we have, the first thing I handed out was a letter, just a succinct letter of description of what's going on, and Mr. Griffith kinda, some of this will be redundant, since he covered it pretty well. The, as he stated, the staff of the city planning department had recommended that we be allowed to make this change from an R2 to a, from an R1 to a C2 zoning change. We have a prospective buyer who would like to make a development there, which I'm gonna elaborate a little on following this. And the Planning and Zoning Commission denied our request primarily for the concepts of nodal development and to create overlays. Their contention was this would be strip development, and according to the little letter I've given you, we wish to emphasize to the Board of Alderman that this car that is currently there is currently developed similarly to adjacent developments, including the three commercial developments that have been built in the past two years, one Hilton Garden Inn, two the medical complexes, and three the, the commercial banking facility. So our development would be similar to that. Our buyer is prepared to build a quality hotel, he's built in Starkville before, I cannot reveal the, divulge the person, but he built the Comfort Suites at the corner of Spring Street and Highway 12, and he built the, I'm sorry, the Hampton Inn, and he built the Comfort Suites at the corner of Russell Street and the Highway 12 extension. So, then, I'd like you to note that those are two very quality hotels that have been built in this area since that time. The last thing I had on the little letter is benefits that would be obvious to you that would, that would be beneficial to the city of Starkville, in addition to the, to the permanent jobs that would be created, and the construction jobs during completion of five to seven million dollar project. Mississippi State University, the Greater Development Partnership constantly, and the Visitors and Convention Bureau have asked and offered for additional hotel beds in the community, particularly during special events, football games, Cotton District Arts Festival, et cetera. We have a shortage of beds, and of course, the tax revenues from sales tax, property taxes, and the 2% hospitality tax would be of great revenue interest to the city of Starkville. The handout I gave you is an aerial view of the, of the area in question, the, what we're requesting to be rezoned is in red diagonal lines. This aerial view shows Pat Station Road to the bridge at the Highway 182, existing Highway 182. MDOT in 2001, or at that time, created a limited access, unlike Highway 12 West development, you're not permitted to put access anywhere you'd like along that property, there are three accesses, permanent, that are in place now. Beginning at Pat Station Road, the first access is at Hilton Garden Inn, on both sides of the corridor. The second is on our, beginning of our property, the northeastern part of our property. The third access is on Mr. Hicks Land, no other access can be along there, so this, it would not be really equated to strip development. This is not a nodal development like the, the comprehensive plan talks about nodal development at intersections and creating overlays, which I firmly believe in, I'm for mixed-use development. Our property's been split up, with the corridor split our property in half, and if you'll notice that transmission line in green, that's 100 feet right away that we're unable to use. The, our prospective buyer would be purchasing part of that, that equals his, his purchase including that would be 350 feet by 100 feet, or about a half an acre, so he would not be able to use that for development at any rate. And moving on from that point on down toward the bypass, you can see the limited use of land, of land space we have between the transmission line and, and the corridor, so we would be very limited in, in future mixed-use development, we just wouldn't have space on our property for mixed-use development. Now, you see the dotted line that begins on Pat Station Road and goes to the bypass, it's a little dotted line. It has come to our attention from the prospective buyer, his attorney has informed us that in discussions with the city of Starkville, there would be a consideration for a frontage road. I've got another handout to give you, that I'd like to discuss this. Pass those, ma'am. This is an aerial view that shows a frontage road added to the property, to the frontage property from Pat Station Road to the bridge. Question?
No, no, five minutes.
If this were required, which I'm unaware of it, the attorney for, for the prospective buyer has brought it to our attention that it may be a request that he have a frontage road. You can see our access to the property, we will be beading additional property to the prospective buyer to have access to it. Anywhere you, any of this property from Pat Station Road to the, to the bridge there at the Highway 182 would have to enter only one of those three accesses, so it, we have no plans for our future land that's shown there for development. If we did, we would have to provide access to it from the access that's already permitted by the MDOT. Now, if you had a frontage road there, you can see on the, on the southern end of that property, it would come to zero land available on the Brian property where it meets the transmission line, and the adjacent property to ours on the Hicks property leaves negligible amount of property to develop if, if a frontage road were required. Our prospective buyer is not interested in one, he's losing a half an acre on this, on the transmission line, and if he were to have one on the front, he's gonna have access, we're providing access, he would have 1.4 tenths of an acre out of a 4.88 acre purchase that he would have no use for, he could not use at all. Additionally, the, the red line show, the orange line shows a frontage road going on toward Pat Station, Pat Station Road across the Hilton Garden Inn, which I think that's a moot point, they're already in place, I don't know that they would build a frontage road, but if it did, that front parcel of their land that's, Dr. Satie is hopeful to sell in the future for development, that would usurp a good bit of his property, so he wouldn't have much. The, the long and short of it, from the transmission line to the corridor, it's not a whole lot of available land available for development, especially if a frontage road were, were added there. We can provide access to our property, we have no plan at this time for future development, but if we did, we would have to provide access to any point on there to get off the highway, because only three points of access are allowed by MDOT. Does anyone have any questions for me?
We'll get questions and comments during the discussion portion, let's do the second part of the presentation first.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, do we have any citizens that wish to speak against the proposed zoning change? And I'll ask on this one, if everybody that wishes to speak against, if you could raise your hand, see how many we've got. Since it's just two of you.
Three.
Oh, three, okay, three of you, if it's okay with y'all, then, then we'll just divide it at a maximum of five minutes apiece, if there's any residual at the end, we'll go from there. So, Mr. Turner, you'll have five minutes.
Agreed with the man, board, again, my name is Adam Tomboy. As I said in my three minutes, the citizens are at the boiling point. We're getting away from our needs, we're getting a lot of what won't, but less need. We, we see now that we're convinced that we need a just complex. It was killed four years ago, because it felt like that we didn't need to spend nine million dollars for something that we need. Now we're running over, where nobody goes and nothing to do. But I do have the material from four years ago, and I will leave it with Mr. Perkins and look over it, but we need to get back to our needs, that if we can get to what I want, but the citizens want us to try to do some, our needs.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. All right, who'd like to speak next? We didn't really go with an order, so be all. How much time for me?
About 13.
There's a, there's a total of 13, so we can split it seven and a half apiece from here.
City Council, thank you for being here, meanwhile, it's pretty lively, and I'm number 11.
Mr. Carter?
Just a couple of quick points, it's come to my attention that new development, being proposed at the bypass efforts are underway to rezon the property, I'm opposed to the rezoning for several reasons. As a graduate at LSU, excuse me, at MSU, I did quite a bit of work, that reaffirm development of previously undeveloped parcels of land lead to increased stress on natural water bodies, creeks and streams, and that leads to degraded quality in areas downstream of the development, so policy's gonna have effect on water quality in the area, which could then have impact on areas in and out of town. For the second reason, I'm a taxpayer of Starkville's first ward, I'm opposed to use of my tax dollars being used to support infrastructure required to sustain development on the outskirts of town, which includes the bypass. It has been known for some time that this type of development is inefficient, it's a waste of taxpayer dollars and places strain on city finances, so if the infrastructure is already in place, the finances needed to sustain that development are going to be a strain. I'd also like to make a point that development in that area, while it will create jobs, and that seems like a good thing, are not going to be accessible to people without cars, so if someone were to walk, need to walk or bike to work, that's gonna be a problem in that area. 20 jobs can be created closer to the city where people can access it by sidewalks or bike or other means. I believe, thirdly, Starkville has enough sprawl development, including strip malls, we have 182 and 12 in Starkville. We have 182 and 12 and Stark Road. If I had it my way personally, I, I'm not a big fan of strip malls, billboards or elevated utility lines, but I know that these aren't going away anytime soon. But we can prevent this type of development in the future if we start taking a stand. Finally, I'm curious as to, and this is a rhetorical question, why the City Council continues to go against the recommendations of P&amp;Z? So if there is a P&amp;Z in place, I'm wondering why they exist? Why, why isn't their decision final? So I'm asking you tonight to consider, please, given the P&amp;Z some teeth, so to speak, so that when they make a vote, that decision is final, and that there could be an appeal process possibly after that, after two requests are denied, then they could make an appeal to come to the City Council then and make some type of request. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Murdock, you'll have a maximum of nine minutes.
Uh, my name's Jeremy Murdock, uh, member Ward Five and member of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Uh, so I wanted to, first of all, clarify the, the issue at hand. The request is for the rezoning from residential to commercial. You're not really approving the project of a proposed hotel with number of jobs, things like that. It's the rezoning of the land from residential to commercial. So that project could fall through next month. It could be liquor stores, gas stations, whatever goes in that long list of potential uses in a commercial zone. So just to keep that in mind, that the jobs, all those type things really aren't a part of the decision, it's the land use. And as far as a piece of property, if you look from the, the welcome sign into campus or into, up to Russell Street, that's one of the last clean entrances we have into town. It's a pretty well buffered area with forested land, undeveloped land that leads up to that first entrance into town. If this commercial development, which is presently from Hilton Garden Inn up to the bypass, and the whole bypass is, uh, pretty much zone commercial, there's plenty of land already zone commercial for this type of development. Uh, but as soon as this property turns over, it's gonna be a domino effect all the way to the Russell Street intersection, and we're gonna have that strip-type sprawled, uh, commercial development, just like Highway 12, just like, uh, Highway 182. We're gonna have that same type of development all the way into town from the bypass. So that's gonna be our long-term entrance into the community. Again, there's just, there's a, this provides a good buffer, uh, zone from the entrance from the commercial area on the bypass into town. But my main point was just to, uh, to point out that the issue is not the project that's been proposed, but more just the rezoning of the land, of the land use. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murdock. And that will conclude, uh, the, the, uh, the hearing portion. Uh, we'll conclude the public hearing as a whole by hearing questions and comments from the members of the board on the presentations. Are there any questions or comments from the members of the board? Any, is that it? Any questions?
I've got a few.
Alderman Davis?
Mr. Gaskin, how, um, this is five acres and hatch. The hatched area on this map, five acres?
Yeah.
Four point eighty-eight, four point eighty-eight is the hatch. But with the access that we're gonna have to dedicate to it will be five acres, a little over five acres.
You say the transmission line's 100 feet?
100 feet by, I'm not sure if you guys have that handout, but, uh, let's see, it's 100 feet by 350.62.
And do you have any idea how many acres are left when you take the transmission line out, the hatch out, and the frontage road area? How many acres are left for development between the transmission line and the frontage?
It'd be the difference in, all right, 1.32 acres would be encompassed with the transmission line and the, if there were a frontage road. So 1.32 from 4.88.
Three and a half. Three, 3.5.
3.5.
No, 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 no. No, you take the 4.8, add the three, the one.
The transmission line and the, if there were a 60-foot frontage road would be 1.32 acres, which significantly minimized the use of the property. I mean, we can't go anymore, you can't go any deeper into the transmission line.
Alderman Davis, do you have further questions?
I don't.
Any further questions or comments from the members of the board? Any further questions or comments? Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, that will conclude, uh, the public hearing on, uh, P&amp;Z item RZ 10-04.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll now move to mayor's business, and, and I've got a series of reports, and then we need to try to set a, uh, a date for a work session on the budget. First report I've got is the report from the curfew task force, and you have the written report in your packets. Uh, I, I will summarize briefly. Since you appointed, uh, the curfew task force to address the issue of, uh, whether there was a need for Starkville to adopt a, uh, curfew ordinance, that committee has met twice and concluded, uh, or made a recommendation by majority that, uh, there, there is no need, uh, for a curfew ordinance at this time. Committee met, uh, June 16th, had an initial meeting, heard initial staff reports on a research, uh, that, that researched to, to various questions I had asked and thought would be a good starting point, uh, for the meeting. The task force then had a discussion about additional information, uh, related to a potential curfew, uh, that would be helpful to have. You have that packet of questions and subsequent information that was provided at the July 22nd meeting, uh, looking at, uh, factors such as relatively low rates of juvenile crime and also, uh, the, uh, the, the high burden of, of establishing a curfew ordinance, which would have required, uh, additional patrol officers as well as potentially a, a juvenile curfew facility. Uh, the, the task force had a discussion and then, uh, reached the conclusion that it, it would recommend that a curfew at this time was not in the best interest of the city of Starkville. Alderman Perkins, uh, did note, uh, that, that he sees the merit in a curfew, but, uh, would abide by the recommendation of the task force. And I'll ask each of the aldermen, uh, who were on the task force, if you have anything to add to that. The aldermen were Sistruck, Corey, and Perkins on the task force.
Have no further comments?
Okay. Any further comments? Period on the curfew task force. All right, seeing none, I'd like to give a report from the municipal complex committee, uh, which had an initial meeting last week and decided steps for moving the, the, the process of, uh, determining feasibility and moving forward with a potential municipal complex project, uh, last week. Couple of things, uh, were determined as action steps, uh, and these are matters, uh, that are planned to come forward, uh, for board approval, uh, potentially at the August 17th, uh, meeting. Uh, the committee, uh, was of the mind that it would be a good step to move forward in seating a citizens committee, uh, that will move through the feasibility study of the project, uh, in accordance with that board committee and of course, on decisions that have to be made, uh, with the full board. That committee will be appointed, uh, of course, ultimately by the board, but nominations will be made, uh, by the, the members of that municipal complex committee. Each member of the committee, including me, uh, will, will make two nominations, and the committee, uh, also gave me the, the green light to nominate a chair. The other, uh, potential action step that the committee decided upon was moving forward and amending the contract of Gary Schaefer, uh, to, uh, incorporate a feasibility study for the project and also update, uh, the, the terms of this contract, uh, in accordance with how the project has progressed since 2004. Uh, we, we did, uh, I guess note at that meeting that we would, uh, do our best to, uh, each give a report on any, uh, potential members of the citizens task force, or, or the citizens committee, uh, that we would be bringing forward at the August 17th meeting. Uh, I, I can start that process off. I have communicated with Dr. Roy Ruby, asked if he would be interested in chairing, uh, the citizens committee, and he has, uh, agreed to serve should the board appoint him. Board members, are there any additional?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, may I be recognized?
You may.
Mr. Mayor, let's, uh, since you mentioned, uh, the person that you had, hence requested service chairperson, I want, uh, to reiterate that I have, um, tendered one of my names for a consideration, uh, at the, uh, committee of the municipal, uh, complex committee, and that name, uh, is, um, Mr. H.W. Webb Jr., uh, who is a longtime employee of the city of Starkville. Uh, I've had the opportunity to work with Mr. Webb, uh, since, I've been a member of this board since on about July 6th, 1993. A person of utmost integrity and character, um, Mr. Webb, uh, has served as, uh, public services, uh, public works director when I initially came onto this board, and prior to my being on this board, he, uh, city engineer, community services department, public services. So he has served with distinction. Uh, Mr. Webb has also, uh, still serves, um, as a consultant, and so I think he'll be a good asset. Uh, we've had, um, employees of the city who have served in the past on, uh, boards, um, and certainly, uh, this is a win-win situation for the city of Starkville. Mr. Webb knows the ins and outs. So I just wanted to reiterate, uh, that, uh, person, I thought that the public would like to be informed, those who was not aware of, of my recommendation, that he would be a, a great benefit and a great asset. So, uh, looking forward to Mr. Webb serving. I did mention to Mr. Webb on, uh, yesterday that I had tendered his name and his absence. He was just delighted and grateful for that, and he is, um, ready and willing to serve. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Do any of the other, uh, members of the board committee, uh, wish to, I guess, update us on status and, uh, potential nominees, uh, for the Au- August 17th meeting? And I, I have two nominations that, uh, I, I, I still, uh, don't have a status report on, so. This is, this will not be a complete slate tonight, but the idea was to fill the, uh, full board in with as much detail as possible this evening.
I have spoken to some people. I haven't received confirmation yet, so I would rather wait until the next meeting.
I have received confirmation from Robbie Cove, who's from Starkville now, um, and he is the only one that has, uh, affirmed.
Okay. So, uh, at the next board meeting, uh, the, the goal is to have the list of, of nine names. It was also mentioned, uh, I, I requested that, that I serve on, on the committee, uh, in an ex officio capacity, and it was requested, uh, as well that, uh, the chief administrative officer serves in ex officio capacity. So we would have nine, uh, citizen members of the citizen committee, uh, and then, uh, the two of us, uh, working with the committee. Any further discussion? Alderman Carter?
Just for clarification, y'all plan on seating the committee and then doing a site feasibility and then presenting that to the public? I want y'all to determine which, whatever site the committee comes up with as the best location.
Yeah, well, the, the, the board would have a, a series of decisions to make in the event that it, it, uh, it, it advanced, uh, in, in the feasibility study, uh, to, to a site location. But the idea with a feasibility study is to get an end product from the citizen committee or a recommendation of an end product, uh, that, that, that could be taken to the public. But before, uh, the city did anything to, uh, take steps to secure land, for instance, uh, there, there would be decisions, uh, that, that the board would have to make.
More or less leading to my question is, do y'all plan on doing any kind of poll or survey to feel if, you know, decide if the constituents even want this, or if they do or don't? I mean, do y'all plan at some point to do a police and poll or a survey, or?
I, I think the, the, the ultimate referendum on the project, uh, will, will come in all likelihood, uh, in, in, in a bond issue. Uh, but before you know what the financial realities of what you're working with, uh, it's a bit premature to, to, to announce exactly that that's where it's going. Further discussion? Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, uh, we need to work to set a date for a budget work session next week. Uh, now, uh, the, the, the timeline of the budget session i- is pressing. Now, the budget committee has reached a point where there are decisions to be made, uh, policy decisions, and, and it feels, uh, that, uh, the input from the board as a whole, uh, will, will be helpful in, in guiding these decisions. Uh, the, the timeline is getting pressing, uh, for the budget, uh, so it is, uh, important, if at all possible, that, that we try to do this next week. Alderman Sistruck, uh, is, is budget chair, and certainly an essential party a- at the meeting, and, and she's going to be out of town on Monday and Tuesday. So that leaves us potentially with Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, and I would suggest it as a, as a starting point, uh, 5:30 because that evening time has tended to have the least conflicts, uh, in the past. Alderman Carter?
Just go at Wednesday evening?
Wednesday at 5:30? Is anybody that has a conflict on Wednesday at 5:30? Any conflict on Wednesday at 5:30? All right, seeing no conflict, we can, uh, plan on setting our work session for Wednesday, next Wednesday at 5:30. All right.
Here?
Yeah. Either here or the sports place. Let, let me reserve the, let me reserve a little wiggle room on that. Okay. All right, further discussion on the bu- budget session had to be held, uh, next Wednesday at 5:30. Seeing none, without objection, I'm gonna move us into a brief recess. Is there any objection to a brief recess? An objection, seeing none?
The passage of time. We have shared your joy at the birth of your children, and proudly, we have watched them grow. We've taken care of your health care needs during the good times and the not-so-good. Your parents and grandparents have depended upon us. Together, we have shared the struggles and the wonders of life. At Oktibahaw County Hospital, we are celebrating 30 years of being your lifelong choice in health care.
Hello, I'm Bill Green, TV committee chair for WOBV 5. In an effort to provide better service to you and your family, we have installed a new telephone line that will reach us whether we are in the office or away from the station. Our new number is 662-546-0510. Please call our station helpline anytime. If we're busy, please leave a message, and one of our staff will return your call just as soon as possible. Again, our new station helpline number is 662-546-0510. Thank you for watching WOBV 5, the station in the heart of the city.
Meeting will now come back to order. Uh, we're now in board business, and the first matter of consideration is the approval of P&amp;Z item number RZ 10-04. Discussing by the members of the board. Alderman Perkins?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve, um, P&amp;Z item number RZ 10-04 based on the change in condition area being a rezoning request by Development Enterprises of Starkville, Inc. for a zoning change from R1 Single Family to C2 General Business located on the western side of Mississippi Highway 12 East, south of Pat Station Road in Ward 5, and that this be approved and, uh, subject to all the conditions of the fairness of fact and conclusion of the planning zoning, of the, uh, the fairness of fact of, of the, uh, report from the, um, Planning Department.
Okay, and the city attorney has suggested as a point of order that the motion needs to be made as a...
Rejection of the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation of denial and move to approve.
I, I can do it. I mean, we could have done it that way, but I, uh, Mr. Mayor, I restate it. Mr. Mayor, I move that we reject the Planning and Zoning Commission's denial of this zoning request and that we approve P&amp;Z item number RZ 10-04 being, based on the change in condition area, being a rezoning request by Development Enterprises of Starkville, Inc. for a zoning change from R1 Single Family to C2 General Business located on the western side of Mississippi Highway 12 East, uh, south of Pat Station Road in Ward 5, and that this be based on the fairness of fact and conclusion of law of this staff report dated July 8th. of fact and conclusion of law of this staff report dated July 8, 2010.
All right, the motion is to reject the denial of the rezoning application by the Planning and Zoning Board, and to approve the rezoning proposal based on a change in condition of the area, rezoning matter being a request by Development Enterprises of Starkville, Inc. for a zoning change from R1 Single Family to C2 General Business located on the western side of Mississippi Highway 12, south of Pat Station Road in Ward 5, and you had a part at the end. What was the last bit?
And that this be consistent with the findings of fact and conclusion of the staff report dated July 8, 2010.
And that it's consistent with the findings of fact, finding of fact and the conclusions of the staff report dated July 8, 2010. Alderman Perkins, is that your motion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been seconded by Alderman Parker. Alderman Perkins, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Any discussion? Any discussion by the members of the board? Any discussion? Any discussion? Oh, and the city attorney would like to take us through the legal standard that you're to consider this based on.
Real quick, and you guys know it, just let me say it so it's on the front of your brain before the vote. The Supreme Court sets the test, the Mississippi Supreme Court. Number one, is there a change in the neighborhood sufficient to substantiate the proposed rezoning? And number two, is there a public need for the proposed rezoning? That's the test, when there's no alleged error in the original rezoning, which has not been alleged here.
Discussion by the members of the board? Any discussion by the members of the board? Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All right, seeing none, we'll now move into a vote on Alderman Perkins' motion, and as a reminder, just to summarize, because it was a complex motion, the effect of the motion of the motion is to approve the proposed zoning change. Please answer yea, nay, or abstain as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carter.
Yea.
Alderman Sistrunk.
Yea.
Alderman Parker.
Yea.
Alderman Corey.
Yea.
Alderman Dumas. Alderman Perkins.
Yea.
Alderman Vaughn.
Yea.
By a vote of six in favor with one against, this measure passes. The next matter on the agenda is the consideration of the adoption of the strategic plan for the city of Starkville. The strategic plan that you have in your packet is the amended version of the strategic plan based on all of the amendments that were discussed and agreed upon by the board members at our last work session on the strategic plan. Alderman Perkins.
Mr. Mayor, very briefly, it looks good. Just a couple of things. Let's fast forward to City Services. I will support it, we can make these two amendments, and I would like to bring your attention to item D and F. Item D on the City Services says the Information Technology Department will be established and staffed as part of a 2011 budget process. If we could just word that, say that Information Technology Department will be considered by the board as part of the 2011 budget process. Just don't want to make, give a stamp of approval tonight. We can do that during the, later on in the budget process. And then F, it says the Planning Department will be reorganized. I would prefer some language to the fact that there'll be discussion by the board for the Planning Department to be reorganized, so we just won't make no decision on that tonight. So, not against it, but I don't want to, you know, with the current wording, it would give a stamp of approval, so just if we could just, when it comes up for a discussion, we can just change that wording, just those two things, and I would love to support it with those changes.
Would you like to make a motion to amend the document? We need some of the documents.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. May I be recognized, Mr. Mayor?
You may.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt the city Starkville strategic plan as presented with two changes, and the changes being on the City Services, and the new D should read, "An Information Technology Department will be considered by the board as part of the 2011 budget process," and that item F on the City Services will be amended to read that there will be discussion by the board for the Planning Department to be reorganized to Community Development Division to better reflect its duties and to focus on current development and future land use planning. That's my motion, Mr. Mayor.
Give me just one second.
And if you want me to restate that, D would read, "An Information Technology Department will be considered by the board as part of the 2011 budget process," and F would be, "There will be discussion by the board for the Planning Department to be reorganized to Community Development Division to better reflect its duties and to focus on current development and future land use planning," and often this is amended.
All right, the motion is for the strategic plan to be adopted as presented with the following changes, and that is that item D under City Services would be changed to read, "An Information Technology Department will be considered by the board as part of the 2011 budget process," and item F under City Services would be changed to read, "There will be a discussion by the board for the Planning Department to be reorganized to a Community Development Division to better reflect its duties and focus on current development and future land use planning." Alderman Perkins, is that your motion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman. Corey Alderman Perkins, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Discussion by the board. Alderman Carter.
My only real concern with this is between this and future revised comprehensive plan, which one of these takes precedence as far as, I mean, I don't know if this is some, just a concrete document that says we have to follow this. Is this more just a overall theory of where we need to head as a city?
They're different documents in nature, where your comprehensive plan is intended to be an all-encompassing, 20-year roadmap for where the city's going. This is a shorter-term statement of consensus goals by this board that you wish to have addressed immediately. And of course, comprehensive plan is an entire section of goals that are part of the strategic plan.
So, under City Services, F, it says the Planning Department will be reorganized to Community Development Division to better reflect its duties and focus on current development and future land use. And by approving this tonight, is that saying that we have to reorganize the Planning Department into the Community Development Division?
And that's actually one of the amendments that's associated with this motion. Under this amendment, I guess the first answer would be no. If it was as it was, it wouldn't have been a binding board order. That's just something that you're publicly committing to. But the most pertinent answer is the amendment that you've got leaves that more open-ended where you're committing to having the discussion about the Community Development Division.
Well, just a step further, like for the city attorney, does this legally bind us to have to follow these? I mean, we can...
No, just, again, it's a statement of policy, it's to the objectives of the city.
Yeah, it's an accountability mechanism for all of us as much as anything else. We are telling the public, "Public, this is where we would like to go." And we're putting it in writing so that everybody knows that this is, these are stated goals of this administration. Further discussion?
Call a question.
All right, the question's been called. Is there any objection? Any objection to moving into a vote? Any objection? Any objection, seeing none, we'll now move into a vote on Alderman Perkins, which is to adopt the strategic plan as amended with changes to item D of City Services, under City Services, which would change the language to read, "An Information Technology Department will be considered by the board as part of the 2011 budget process," and change to item F, adding in the language, "There will be a discussion by the board for the Planning Department," and the rest reads the same. All those in favor, please, or, excuse me, let's do this one by roll call. Please respond by saying yea, nay, or abstain as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Vaughn.
Yea.
Alderman Perkins.
Yea.
Alderman Dumas.
Yea.
Alderman Corey.
Yea.
Alderman Parker.
Yea.
Alderman Sistrunk.
Yea.
And Alderman Carter.
Yea.
By a vote of seven in favor with zero against, this measure passes. The next matter on the agenda is the consideration of placing a six-month moratorium on cutting certain defined trees in the city of Starkville. Alderman Dumas.
Because the utility question was raised, and this document does not address that, I would like to send this document back to the committee so that those answers can be
All right, and I guess on that recommendation, there's any number of things that can be done. Formal action could be taken to refer it, formal action could be taken to table it or otherwise postpone it, or no action could be taken at all, and it could just be...
Well, I move that we table the discussion and resend it to the committee so that action, our further refinement can be made.
Okay, motion has been made by Alderman Dumas to table the consideration of a six-month moratorium on cutting certain defined trees in the city of Starkville, and to refer the matter back to the Tree Board for further discussion. Alderman Dumas, is that your motion?
It is.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman. Sistrunk, Alderman Dumas, do you wish to speak on the merits?
I do not.
Any discussion by the members of the board? Any discussion? Alderman Vaughn.
Alderman Ward 5, thank you so much for doing that, because there's so many more than important things that we can be doing. There's 1998 annexation, we need to be trying to get that. Completing the reroad ditch is something we need to be thinking about, what we can be doing. Police harassment complaints, we need to look into those and find out where are all these coming from and why. Recapping the 2% tax revenue, we keep on howling about we don't have money. We need to look into that, recapture some of that. Changing orders and making new orders, and I believe in the first year, we done changed more orders, made new orders than the past two previous boards. That's all we doing, just changing orders and making new orders. Revisit the sidewalk orders, we building sidewalks that going to nowhere, we need to revisit that. These are more important things that we can do besides telling a man he can't cut his trees when he get ready. I think we, pit bulldogs attacked a man, Calvin, had we find out who did that, who dogs, what? We just, I mean, every time I look around, we got a committee, a different committee set up. Why is all these committees? We forgetting about what we was elected for. We was elected for to represent the city of Starkville, the poor, the needed, as well as the rich and the wealthy. We forgetting about what we here for. We was elected for these people to represent the city of Starkville to the best of our ability. These people questioning our credibility every day. I get tired, Mr. Tom, I get upset at what he say sometime. I do. They questioning our credibility, like we don't know what we doing. These are some important things that we need to concern about. Gentlemen Ward 5, I appreciate you taking that off their committee. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Further discussion? Any further discussion?
Mayor, I've got one thing to add. This is something, first of all, Alderman Dumas, I just asked to not even bring this back in front of us. It's something I struggled to even find a constituent that was in favor of it, and I do appreciate what you're doing, and I think it's a good committee. I think, though, it's an advisory committee of sort, and maybe if you do bring it back in front of the board, that would be, any kind of moratorium on tree cutting would be for city property only at the most, but not when you, when you start infringing on people's property rights and personal rights, then it's just not a good thing. Also, with hurricane season coming up, and then, you know, always have, well, not always, every couple of years, we have ice storms here in Starkville, and I think it's more of a, it's a greater health and safety concern, you know, if some tree falls on somebody's house. I think if somebody knows if a tree starts leaning, they've got a right, or if a tree's not leaning, they want to cut it down for the grass to grow, that they have the right to cut that tree down, and that we don't have a right as an advisory committee to tell them they do or don't have the right to cut a tree, so. I ask that you bring it, not even, don't even bring it back to us, but if you do, limit it just to city property and not people's personal property.
Alderman Parker.
I would just, I would concur with Ward 1, that I would be willing to look at the consideration of city-owned property or city-owned housing, but from a private landowner's standpoint, I would be not at all for any moratorium on cutting trees off private property.
Further discussion by the members of the board? Any further discussion?
I guess, I guess just to clarify some of these questions, I was, you know, I appreciate everybody's comments. One, my, I guess to go back to what we were elected for, I was elected in large part, one of my campaign things was quality of life, and I see trees, I see the natural environment, I see the overall environment in which this community is found as an overall quality of life thing. This moratorium was set up to only protect healthy trees, not trees that were diseased, and the comment was raised about, you know, this being a heavy-handed board, and I think it, I appreciate the fact that we have the expertise in this community by virtue of the university to enable and to lean on those that are experts in their fields, you know, just like the, you know, the utility gentleman, I'm sorry, Ben?
Billy.
Billy, sorry. You know, who made the comment, you know, he cuts trees for a living, but also appreciated the fact that we were looking at a moratorium. I've, I've had the pleasure of living in cities that had these in place, I've had the pleasure of, and I think we've all had the pleasure of going to communities that had these in place where you immediately began to associate yourself with the physical nature of trees as landmarks, as scale-defining activities within pedestrian space. You can get us technical because you want. Today, I'll use this as an example, we had a master plan meeting for the university. One of the first things the master plan committee talked about, and the specialists that's here from Harvard, or from Boston, talked about the lack of tree canopy on our campus, and I think that is directly associable to the city of Starkville and the way that we've handled not only development in this community, which is a private property endeavor, but how we respect historic trees in this, within our community fabric. I don't want this to be an infringement of personal rights, but at the same time, as anything this city does and as anybody who lives within the city, there are infringements of rights, if that's what we want to call them, from building codes, setbacks, land use, zoning, and other type of development actions that are there that help public safety, public welfare, and the public good and health, and this action was one of them. And we saw something in the paper that this really related to from the standpoint of people who walk out of their yard one morning, and the trees that they associate with, and one of the few amenities that they have on their property is now gone. No shade, their shrubs are gone, they've been told no more gardens, they've been told no more anything on their property, which I see as an even more infringement of personal rights. So, I do appreciate everybody's comments. We're going to take this back to the Tree Board. We'll see what comes out of that, and then we'll see where it goes from there.
Further discussion by the members of the board? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion, seeing none, we'll now move into a vote on Alderman Dumas' motion, which summarizing is to table and refer back to the Tree Board. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Measure clearly passes. The next matter on the agenda is the consideration of the approval of the annual budget for the expenditure of 2% funds in accordance with the requirements of House Bill 1833 and Board Resolution dated March 16, 2004. And to clarify a bit further, this is the discussion of the Mississippi State 20% portion of the 2% funding. Discussion. Alderman Perkins.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the annual budget for the expenditure of the 2% funds in accordance with the requirements of the House Bill 1833 and Board Resolution dated March 16, 2004.
Alderman Perkins has made a motion to approve the 2% budget as presented by the MSU, by MSU Student Affairs for the expenditures of the 2% funds for the fiscal year of 2011 in accordance with the requirements of House Bill 1833 and Board Resolution dated March 16, 2004. Alderman Perkins, is that your motion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Sistrunk. Yeah? Alderman Perkins, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Any discussion by the members of the board? Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion, seeing none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Measure clearly passes. The next matter on the agenda is the discussion of the matter of issuing three certificates of occupancy resulting from a final flat that has not been recorded in accordance with the city of Starkville subdivision regulations. Prior to the meeting, the city attorney suggested that this matter might be ripe for consideration in executive session. My recommendation would be that we move into a closed session to determine whether there is a need to move into executive session.
Can we not wait to, wait to that part of the agenda and then...
We can move it if you'd like to.
Let's reorder the agenda.
Okay, do I hear a motion to reorder the agenda?
So move to move item C, aye, to, uh, executive, executive session? Is that correct?
Yes. Motion has been made by Aldman Parker to move item 10, aye, on page three, to the executive session portion of the agenda. Aldman Parker, is that your motion?
It is.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Aldman Corey. Aldman Parker, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Saying none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Measure clearly passes. The agenda has been reordered. The next matter of business is the request for approval of the city of Starkville Fire Department Claims Docket as of July 29, 2010.
Mayor, may I refuse my say?
You may. We'll give Aldman Carver a moment to exit the room.
So moved.
Motion has been made by Aldman Dumas to approve of the city of Starkville Fire Department Claims Docket as of July 29, 2010. Aldman Dumas, is that your motion?
It is.
Did I hear a second? Aldman Corey?
Yes.
It's been seconded by Aldman Corey. Aldman Dumas, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Saying none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Measure clearly passes. We'll give Aldman Carver a moment to re-enter the room. The next matter on the agenda is the request for approval of sending Carol Joy, Michelle Polk, Vicky Lowry, and Jeff Lyles to Excel computer training at EMCC for a cost of $120. Mr. Boyd?
Yes, I apologize for this late addition. We just got this finalized yesterday, and we need to get a check cut. It's not on the claims docket. This is sending four of our employees to Excel computer training at EMCC. One will be in advanced training, the other three will be the basic level training. Start August 16th and go till the end of September. Classes meet in one time, believe, at $30 per employee.
Discussion by the members of the board?
So moved.
Motion has been made by Aldman Dumas to approve of sending Carol Joy, Michelle Polk, Vicky, and Vicky Lowry and Jeff Lyles to Excel computer training at EMCC for a cost of $120. Aldman Dumas, is that your motion?
It is.
Do I hear a second? Motion's been seconded by everybody. Aldman Vaughn. Now, Aldman Dumas, do you wish to speak on the merits?
I do not.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Saying none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Measure clearly passes. The next matter on the agenda is the request for ratification of a purchase for the, an emergency force main, for the emergency force main project from Central Pipe, a submitter of the lowest quote in the amount of $6,035.96. Mr. Devlin?
Thank you, Mayor. Last meeting, I briefly got into some of the issues we ran to, on the planned pipeline for the new force main, mostly being underground obstructions. And by the time I got the new profile from the engineers, the last board meeting has come and gone, and we really need to get these materials in because we're trying to get the tie-ins done before the students come back for registration weekend, because we're going to have to be doing bypass pumping. And flows are a lot lower in the city when the students are in the summer session. So that being said, I purchased, I got four quotes, purchased the pipe and materials from the lowest submitter of the quote, and they were two-weekly timed.
Discussion by the board?
I move.
Aldman Vaughn has made a motion to ratify the purchase of the emergency force main replacement project from Central Pipe, the submitter of the lowest quote in the amount of $6,035.96. Aldman Vaughn, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Aldman Corey. Aldman Vaughn, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No.
Any discussion? Aldman Parker?
Doug, we talked earlier, you know, I'd really like to see, you know, with these projects, I'd really like to see how we stand against our budgeted amount.
Sure.
Because we're buying a bunch of different parts for this project, and I'd like to know how this valve compared to our budgeted valve. I'd like to see that on all the...
Yeah, next time I request something, I'll go ahead and give a status against the project budget, just so, you know, just show where we are as far as meeting the budget.
Further discussion?
How do you feel about this on this particular project? I mean, as far as meeting budget, are you within budget on it?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, we're going to make good shape.
Further discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Saying none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Measure clearly passes. The next matter on the agenda is the request for approval to install 1,900-foot of gravity sewer in the 1998 annexation area. Mr. Devlin?
Yeah, um, last week, Ms. Betty Bell, lives out on Sudeth Road, approached the County Health Department about getting a permit to put in a private sewage system. And where she lived, it was really an ideal location to put one in. They could have recommended an aerobic unit in which the effluent would discharge into a creek adjacent to her property. But anyway, after she went to the Health Department, the regulations have really become a lot stricter and a lot tighter in the last couple of years. They, they don't allow any discharging directly into drainage ditches anymore. She was going to have to get an easement from the neighboring property owner for 150 feet and actually spray the effluent onto the, to the ground where it could run over the surface of the ground. Of course, the neighbor wasn't willing to give an easement for, for that, for that purpose. So the only other option she, she has to get city sewer is for us to run a connection for her new, new residence.
Discussion.
So this is the only, I mean, this is her only option?
Yeah, I mean, she tried, she, I think she actually... Did you talk to, to McMans next door?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, they weren't willing to...
They weren't willing to sign the agreement.
Yeah, yeah.
How big of an area is it? How big of a lot or land is, is the house on? Is it...
Have you got about an acre there?
Acre.
Yeah.
I'm loving that.
Yeah. And it, the soil conditions up there, too, just more perk. And I remember when I got my system at my home 10 years ago, it was really easy. I mean, you could just, the effluent, you could just run it into a nearby drainage ditch. They require everything to be sprinkled now. Now, yeah. And then, in addition to that, if the neighbor did give her the easement, she would have to hire an inspector to come every six months to inspect the system and do a report, which is, really puts a financial burden on, on Ms. Bell.
Doug, I'm glad that we'll have an opportunity at least to continue to provide services to those 98 annexed areas. How much closer will that put us towards completion of sewer services to that part of town?
Well, we've got many, many homes out there who don't have services. And there have been occasions where, now, the people who already have septic tanks, they've been grandfathered in. They don't have to follow the new, new regulations. So as long as they keep them in good working order, they're fine. But a situation like this, it's a new residence, and, you know, you just basically have to start from scratch as far as meeting the new regulations. But there's, there's still a lot of areas that, you know, existing homes that, that don't have the services right now.
Aldman Vaughn?
Ald is still part of 1998 annexation.
Yeah, this, this particular one is, yeah.
Since this is going in the direction I think we have to go, and it's the only option, I move approval.
Motion has been made by Aldman Dumas to approve the installation of a 1,900-foot gravity sewer line to serve three residents on Sudeth Road in the 1998 annexation area at, at a cost of $43,323.50. Aldman Dumas, is that your motion?
It is.
Do I hear a second? Motion has been seconded by Aldman Vaughn. Aldman Dumas, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Saying none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Measure clearly passes. The next matter on the agenda is the request of approval to purchase a 16-inch check valve for the Influent Pump Station upgrade project from HMIM, Inc., the submitter of the lowest quote in the amount of $6,063.
Yeah, this was on the agenda as item four, but when I had made the, put the packet copies together on Friday, I'd gotten another quote in about that same time, which was about $1,300 cheaper for, for a better valve. And so that's, you know, that's why we decided to just go ahead and see if we can get, revise this item and see if we can get the low quote approved tonight.
Discussion.
Say move.
Motion has been made by Aldman Carver to approve of a purchase of a 16-inch check valve for the Influent Pump Station upgrade project for HMIM, Inc., the submitter of the lowest quote in the amount of $6,063. Aldman, Aldman Carver, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Aldman Corey. Aldman Carver, do you wish to speak on the merits? Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Saying none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Measure clearly passes. Thank you, Mr. Devlin. And that exhausts the non-executive session portion of our agenda. A motion to move into closed session would be an...
Mayor, I move that we move into closed session and discuss the need for executive session.
Aldman Corey has made a motion to move into closed session to determine the need for an executive session. Aldman Corey, is that your motion?